Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, actually, I don't understand.
Yeah. It's hard to be able to speak.
At six thirty, we will call this meeting door. We stand will have the okay. Right, here, Father, come before you this evening, humbling ourselves before you magnify in your name, asking that your wisdom be placed upon each and every person represented in this country. Father, we ask that you guide us, let's do what's in the best interest of all the citizens of the town of Silver City, and return that glory back to you that you so richly serve. We ask these things in your gracious name, amen. If you would join with us to pledge allegiance to the flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. And just to the general. Well, I hear none, sorry, can't even hear nothing. Okay. So in a second, all those in favor, if you can again say aye. All those like sign and emotion carries. All right. Oh, business. We're here tonight to, uh, number one. We have two candidates that we wanted to be interviewing, Mr. Donald Matthews, Mr. Dan Underwood, and, uh, we have this format. Before that, we got five minutes for an opening statement, thirty minutes for question and answer, and then another five minutes to end that, you know, for any responsive candidate there. After, uh, first candidate goes, we'd like, we would ask that this first candidate go out and, uh, we'll proceed with the second one. After we've interviewed both candidates, we will go, we will have a vote, which candidate selects by ballot. Yeah, well, yeah, you're right, voting rule, or faith is on, so, eleven, well, that's today's, voting rule. And these are rules that we've gone by before, submitted by the school of government. William, you want, since you're the law expert, you want to go over? I'm reading them now, I'm generally familiar with them, but maybe, uh, we'll do that. Right before you. Right before the vote, yeah, okay. But what, just out here, we're going to be following the established rule by the school of government, right there, and, uh, all that was in there. All right. Anything else? Anything we overlook, Mr. Manager? Anything we overlook? All right. Let's proceed on, we'll go with our first candidate, uh, Mr. Donald Matthews. If you would, if you'd state your name and address, and you can have your opening statement.
My name is Donald Matthews, 909 12th Street, Silver City, North Carolina. First of all, I want to thank the board and the citizens for this opportunity for California. That, uh, pretty much my case, I guess, so to speak, is what I'm trying to say. That's not going down. I've already asked this Jennifer to call Jay other way. I went to the VA today, and, uh, there are some things that I have to immediately take care of. To those of you that felt enough of me to support me, I'd say thank you. But I am not going to be able to hear all the difference. I will be having surgery next week. I don't know. About the, about the time. And believe to go proceed with it. With those who are my boy. I'm not doing this for me. The thing is not about me. But at the very beginning, it was about the people in this community. And with that, then don't you I wish you guys the best in this camp the best way to live. And the state if you guys work together for the common good, I don't know what the future holds. I would always love Silver City. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. We, in whatever the journey is that you're embarking on, you have our support, and, uh, if it's okay with you, I'll add you to my prayer, personal prayer list. And I think everybody here on this board would do the same thing. And I admire you for your courage, it took a lot of courage for you to come and do what you just did. And I admire you for that, and, uh, I thank, like I said, our thoughts and prayers will be with you in whatever you're getting ready to experience, or whatever you have to do. Oh, um, Al. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Thank, thank you. All right. Then we'll proceed on with the next candidate.
Does that, see the question, that's a revolve, and where does that put us? If that's a withdrawal.
I think it's a pleasure of the board, whether you still want to go through uh, the questioning process, or if you don't feel it's necessary, obviously, it's not necessary in order to choose. Right, so. My thought, you correct, we didn't have an opening statement. We'll go come there, because I agree with you, Liam, I don't know that fishing and answering would be pertinent in this part of the role.
And I understand where you all come from, but I would still like for us to do the questioning.
Okay.
Because we still need to know where where he is on some of these.
That work, it'd be fun. So, did somebody else? Did somebody else have a question? All right, Mr. Underwood, uh, you're up, if you would, if you state your name and your ad- address. You have five minutes to do an opening statement, please, sir.
Okay, my name is James Underwood, 1001 North Carolina Avenue, here in Silver City. And therefore, possibly when you, one twenty-two years old. For that, I lived there. They played departments, there's probably two. Uh, winter armed department, when I first moved here, uh, back in nine thirty. Kind of first part of, uh, Silver City was I was, uh, with the town for over twenty-nine years. Of course, I was born and raised there. Of course, the public schools, Silver Elementary, first of all, I came to Silver, I'm a fellow, remember that? Uh, then, uh, Silver Elementary, middle, graduated going back to you in nineteen eighty-nine. I had three girls. My oldest and youngest graduated from J M. My middle one, she graduated from Charlotte. Unfortunately, my oldest one had to help her move to Virginia, which I was really helping sure find something closer to home, but unfortunately, there's nothing. I love to see Silver City go back to what we had before. We had industry, we had, we had, actually, our young children were young adults staying in the town. Now, unfortunately, they're all unfortunately, not there. Oldest ones were gone.
And that, that industry statement.
That's, that's my introduction, that's my girls, my wife, uh, everybody, everybody knows.
All right, all right. So we'll now move into the questioning phase, uh, how we want to do it. Louis, you, you want to start off, and we'll come down this way, that way we'll skip over.
In your introduction, you mentioned, uh, industry and getting, um, businesses back in the family. Can you expand on that a little bit, and kind of then what you, your vision for?
I, I know that the town, the town was working on a board, or, you know, if the restrictions lift it off, so, I understand, we were not able to handle housing, we're in, adding businesses, probably more to once we had it, uh, like we're worth with council. We find out what we can to bring our industry back to Silver City. I, I don't have all the answers, I've never been a political person, but I'm willing to learn through y'all. Yeah, I'm going, I hope y'all, uh, really want to teach me, so, like I said, I'm willing to run. So, I know the town can help with taxes, with water, things like that, uh, so, they'll help businesses with you. Old Gold Fields, that's a plot of land. They're getting, what's the class name, the mortgage, but that's open area. Uh, as we speak, they don't want to move chattel, empty warehouse, anything should be overdoing. So, like I said, I need to know what I can do to help this town get cost worth.
Um, some of the night, I have to know, what would you do to enhance the town and help the people? If it's a thing of duty.
Like I said, I'm willing, like I said, willing to learn, I'm not sure what all we can, I can do. Uh, like I said, I do talk to our young generation, you know, they like to be involved, and this is their community too. Uh, I don't know if y'all familiar with QR code? A little thing, if you've got a smartphone, you can hold it up, and it'll bring up any information the town can provide. Uh, events, sporting events, uh, National Night App, and anything like that. Uh, younger kids love smart technology. And I think that'd be one thing that we, uh, use to, uh, get them more interested in the art community.
I don't, I don't have any questions to be frank, but I would ask. Um, looking at the town of Silver City, we are a very diverse community. How would you work with all people in Silver City to make everyone feel a part of the town? And also encouraging, um, people to get more involved?
Of course, holding more events besides National Night App, I know there's uh, Jim P, what was, uh, coming up today, I don't know, I don't think it was canceled. Uh, just holding more events in the east. But for giving them what the example was, but, uh, the heavy break on it, break on it. That was real, really real, that's it. Had all diverse culture there. And, like, they're walking around, talking to people, things, and do that. I think we need more of uh, I think we just kind of get down at the group, and come up with ideas to, uh, get that done. So I'm I said, I'm willing to learn, I'm willing to help, and I put my few cents in, uh, whatever I need to do.
I was thinking about the, um, looking at the, uh, demographics of the town of Silver City, and looking at the, um, workforce in Silver City. What would you do to try to increase more, uh, people of color to, uh, apply for jobs? With the town of Silver City?
No, there's so much to apply with the talent, by language, education. I'm not sure if there's a sound on, where you're like a little, you know, just a file, or, uh, I guess you might say, worth for the town. I know there's also a pay increase for, like I said, vegetation, hazard experience, things like that, which is great. But get people interested in a certain position, especially the police department. I don't know hey, say this, I don't know how if you can, uh, get people to apply. People younger and through see what's on TV. And they see what law enforcement has to done, and just not very killing. Unfortunately. I don't know if many of it is. If we can, uh, get some recruits, recruiting them, get them interested about in the law enforcement, pay them to do the, figure out they, uh, you know, send them to get their associate degree. That might help give them, I can, the right thing, to what they need. Our speed is having a problem, it's all, it's all around. That's a unfortunately difficult how it, it, how it works with the party. Paying service, something like that, the town don't probably get that. Thank you, Brad.
Jay. Uh, now, a difficult situation, what's the other thing?
Need the knife?
Public seriousness of being law enforcement, there's I wouldn't trade it for a role. Uh, one situation, I had a supervisor, pretty much, asking me out competition, you know, policy. And even though the other shifts were all doing, that is, everybody, I do listen. This time they forward to the that my attention. Question.
So, uh, we, Silver City is a, uh, a manager of council form of government. Can, what, can you tell me what that means to you? Well, yeah, it's a manager council form of government, so what does that mean?
I mean, government is, uh, the answer to the number, to the town manager, that town manager brings this information to the town. Uh, that, that being said, uh, brings all everything, life, problems, concern, uh, within that department, the police department, other words, and water, and council as a whole, and I was ready for
So, in, in, in a hierarchy like that, in, in a, you know, basically a chain of command, um, tell me how, as a commissioner, citizen comes to you about a water situation, about, you know, street repairs, something, because you're going to get called, you're going to get the, you know, the visits, I think we've all had them. And so, tell me, when, when something like that occurs, how do you work within that, that, that form of government, that chain of command, to get, to get the citizens' concerns addressed?
First, I give you, go to take emails each commissioner, count state problem, then, I guess, that commissioner, the mayor, will go to the town manager force that concern, that town manager will go to that department to get that situation resolved.
Yeah, I know, we're, I, I know, and, and I'm, I'm very guilty of it myself, is going directly to a department head when, and I think that that's something, um, that, as a, as a commissioner, being able to recognize that chain of command, that's going to be very important. So, how do, how would you go about building a relationship with, A, the rest of the board, and B, the town manager?
Well, I think I pretty much have a great, well, unless you were each one of you. But cannot, will not hesitate to come to the hall, uh, say what's going on. And of course, being that said, that problem with the mayor, for, for, for the town manager. Like I said, I would, uh, being law enforcement, under the chain of command, uh, like I was mayor, or not mayor, was major of, uh, it's one of four five years, I think. Chain of command was very, you didn't break the chain. If the department had a problem, sergeant, he went to that sergeant, sergeant went to the tenant.
Well, over the years, uh, had none of your extension, uh, extension of being the one that always asked about money, you know, and how we're going to spend it, and, uh,
He does a pretty good word with that, too.
Uh, I'm usually the ones that, where does the money come? So, with that said, I, can you, uh, us as a board, we are responsible for technically spending the taxpayer's money and what it needs to be spent on, that. And, uh, can you tell me, or tell the board something about what your philosophy is when it comes to finances, and how they should be looked at, administered, that type of thing?
I said, when the free phone we put in, brought, immediately, how we're helping progress at the phone. And, of course, they went into the border, or, judging, and tell us, uh, okay, what is this? What is, yeah, how it wants? See what I can do to put off, or what do you feel, and it's positive. Like I said, I'm not sure, I've never, I've been, later retreat and things like that, I've never said before, with, with dollars, but accept it, like I said, when I'm, maybe, follow the speed, all kinds of it. But, I mean, I think departments have an exceptionally centralized, that need to be taken care of. Bringing, getting, scoring.
Just, you may think it's first, you should have balanced it. Yes, but, that will take you a long way, that's one thing that I believe in, and I think the board is always in, have, but that's the reason I ask, because I want to look at the finance.
And likely, you're, we're, I don't know. I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I don't have a special much, I do. I've heard of, we've got chicken, I don't mean you got that. Got any, it's, it's, it's like a, like a
Do you have any, uh, it's, it's questions or answers, any questions, uh, created anymore? Questions to the board?
I don't have any other questions.
Right. You know what? All right. You've got five minutes for a closing statement.
Like I said, I am, like I said, I'm not a great public person, but I'm saying I am going to learn. I will, I have worked with this town for, between nine and ten years. Growing up, even, growing up, I think, I think three days, I think, place, recreation, growing up, we had a man, unfortunately, lost his life. Unfortunately, it's all gone. I think Silver City, I first started in Silver City, nine thirty. We have cool, we have twice as much as this at the new street, we hit it off, and now, time has rolled, and then we they, uh, I don't expect, I understand, this world wants to keep Silver City as ruled and agriculture possible, while they're building theirs, their end up. agriculture possible, while they're building theirs, there in, uh, we're a great city, we're a great community. Uh, we deserve how more housing, industry, hopefully, to get that back. Here in I'm going to learn, uh, do what it takes to make sure that it's probably better, after.
All right, thank you, Mr. Underwood. Uh, I reckon we're now ready to go to the next thing. Councilman, who's the guy that's here, just for, how do we, how do we proceed?
I think since you only have one I'll see how the hours, providing them out, uh, you can do that if you want, um, but you're not selecting from above areas, standing next, so um, if the board is inclined to, uh, point Mr. Underwood, I think just a motion, because there's no right way, there's no required way. I mean, the school government has listed several different ways, but I think in this situation, I think just a motion for sufficient.
Motion to point Jay, James J. Underwood, to the vacant commissioner at Silver City, uh, on to Silver City.
Right. Right, we have a motion, I have a second to that motion. Is there any further discussion about the motion? Now, we're ready to vote, do all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
All right.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion case, Mr. Underwood, you are now commissioner of law. Do you, when you get sworn in, you can interpret.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
We, we can get the, we've got to get sworn in. You, can we get that done by next month?
I already have it on the list, so it shouldn't be a problem.
There you go. Yes, next is coming, but, yeah, the word, all right. Anything else in the board? I'd say thank you for, you know, your participation in this process, I'd say thank you for having the extra meeting and all that. And, uh, I'm, I know it takes time, like, for the fan of this party, it's important, and I appreciate your effort and what you put into it, so. Anything else, I hear most to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.